All right, you ready?
Two of the committee.
All right, good evening everyone. It's 7:00 PM. Bridgewater Township Zoning Board of Adjustment Regular Meeting, Tuesday, June 24, 2025. Time is 7:01. Adequate notice to this meeting was provided in accordance with Open Book Meetings Act, NJSA 10:4-6. Specifically on January 15, 2025, proper notice was sent to the Superior News, Star Ledger, and filed with the clerk at the township of Bridgewater, and posted on the municipal bulletin board. Please be aware of the zoning board adjustment policy for public hearings. No new applications will be heard after 9:30 PM, and no new testimony will be taken after 10:00 PM. If you're able, please rise for the salute to the flag.
(inaudible). United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Good evening, Maria. If we can have a roll call, please.
Chairman Fuze.
Here.
Mr. Whiteout.
I'm here.
Mr. Sweeney.
Here.
Mrs. Amin.
Mr. Gajewski.
Here.
Mr. Fresco.
Here.
Mr. Vesio.
Here.
Mr. Koolak.
Here.
And Mr. Gabbert.
Here.
Just for the record, Mr. Bonjono is absent. Mr. Seacat is absent. And we also have Richard Aller, Board Attorney.
Who's here?
William Burr, Board Engineer.
Here.
Catherine Sarmard, Board Planner.
And Maurice Washad.
Here.
Graphic Engineer.
Great, thanks so much. At this time, I'll open up the meeting to members of the public that would like to speak on any land use issue which is not on our agenda this evening. You can come on up. All right, scene none, I'm going to close that portion. We have no minutes. We have two resolutions. First up, we have Paul Miller Group, Route 22 West, Block 559, Lot 5.02. Looking for comments, corrections, please.
Couple of comments, Mr. Chairman, just a few typos here, I think. On page five, the middle of paragraph seven, it says Gannett Courier New Building, it should be News Building. Page 12. The carryover paragraph at the end, it says something about opined or advanced by the repurposing, should say of, this vacant commercial site. The word "of" is inserted. And at page 16. Paragraph 50, three lines from the bottom indicated that the adjoining car dealership, it says "to the east," it's "to the west."
All right. If there's anyone else?
Yeah, I just have a comment. I'm going to be guilty here. It's 22 pages, I didn't read the whole thing. Is there a clause in there, I believe there is, Rich, where they cannot load and unload cards on 22?
Yes.
Because I've noticed other dealerships are, have done it over the last few weeks and hold up traffic on 22?
Yes, it's in there.
Okay.
As a condition, yes.
All right. Have a motion, please.
I move with changes.
Motion with changes. Second, please.
Second.
Gajewski.
Mr. Whiteout.
Yes.
Mr. Sweeney.
Yes.
Mrs. Amin.
All right, next up, we have the Shad, Route 202, 206, north, Bird Avenue, Block 470, Lot 7.
Just one minor correction at page two. Paragraph three, the architect firm name, it says Ali, A-L-I, second word, R-S-G, I think it's a Q-U, not an A-U. That's all.
All right, anyone else? Have a motion with the changes, please?
I move with the change.
Mr. Weddely, do you have a second, please?
Second.
Mr. Gajewski.
Mr. Whiteout.
Yes.
Mrs. Amin. Mr. Fresco.
Yes.
Mr. Gajewski.
Yes.
All right. Rich, you want to take us through Rockland APV real quick?
Yes, so, Rockland APV, which was, just looking for it here. Was scheduled for this evening, they've asked to be adjourned, since they don't, they're making some plan changes and they're not ready, they've asked to be adjourned to September 30 without further notice.
So, anyone here for that case that's going to be moved to September 9, 2025, this room, 7:00 PM? All right.
Uh, September 30.
September.
Wait, I'm sorry.
I have September 9.
September 9.
Okay, all right, September 9.
Extended time through September 30.
Gotcha, September 9, this room, 7:00 PM. All right, Starbucks, you're up. Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the.
Hi there.
I know it's a different face, we'll get to that in just a moment. My, uh, my name is John Stoles from the firm of Lowenstein Sandler. I'm here on behalf of the applicant, Bridgewater Realty 2 LLC.
Get the mic.
Sure. So, as some of you may recall, at the last hearing, the applicant's attorney at that time, Mr. Henry Kent Smith, from Fox Rothschild, announced that he was retiring at effective April 1. Following that announcement, the applicant had contacted me, asked me to step in and sort of continue this application on their behalf. I fully admit stepping into an application that's been pending for about 16 months is not ideal. But, you know, be that as it may, although we were not prosecuting this application, we have been outside general counsel to the applicant and their family and their business interests for a better part of 20, 30 years. I have personally been involved in this site in varying capacities for close to 20 years. So, while we haven't been involved in this particular application, we're not a stranger to this particular site or the town of Bridgewater in general. So, for the record, the applicant is Bridgewater Realty 2 LLC. This is 1288, 1298, Route 22 in Morgan Lane, Block 222, Lot 601. This is a condominium project, this is Unit 3 in that condominium property in the HIC Highway Interchange Commercial Zone, and it's an application for preliminary and final major site plan, use variance and bulk variance approval. I think many of us recall this is a continuation hearing. The application started with a hearing on February 27, 2024. There were subsequent hearings on March 12, May 28, August 27 of 2024, and the most recent hearing was March 11, 2025. This is our sixth hearing on this application. At the close of the last hearing on March 11, there was an announcement made to the public that notice would be carried without the need for further publication or mailing of notice to a date that was June 10. It turned out that June 10 was in fact Election Day, so there was not going to be a hearing that evening. So, in abundance of caution, we did renotice this application in accordance with the land use law. So, just as a housekeeping item, before we get started, I'd like to confirm, for the record with the Board Attorney, that the Board is properly vested with jurisdiction to hear this case with notice having been properly given under the municipal land use law to continue the hearing as necessary.
Yes, Mr. Stoles, I reviewed the notice, it's in proper form, it was served on the 200-foot list timely and published timely, so the Board does have jurisdiction.
Thank you very much. So, I'm sure everyone recalls, this is the Starbucks application as mentioned at the beginning. This is the same site that received Planning Board approval back around 2019 for the Goddard School. Over the past 16 months, you've all heard extensive testimony and further into the application, lot of issues coming up that were addressed over the past, the course of that past 16 months, issues relating to ingress egress, site access, queuing, stacking, and of course, access to Morgan Lane. In response, you know, the applicant, to their credit, were thoughtful, they tried to make meaningful changes to these plans to address the concerns raised by the Board and members of the public. For instance, agreeing to abandon their DOT-approved driveway, reducing the drive-through lane, through lanes from two to one, while preserving onsite stacking at about 30-plus vehicles. And restricting the use of Morgan Lane through the use of various traffic techniques onsite. We'll get into those in greater detail during the course of the application, but ultimately, with an effort to direct the flow of traffic naturally in a circular fashion away from Morgan Lane toward the existing driveway in front of the Stone Tavern along Route 22. So, in anticipation of this evening's hearing, we did submit about, in the middle of May or so, partial plan revisions which were further intended to address certain traffic and onsite circulation comments that were raised and brought up during the March 11 hearing. There'll be testimony this evening describing what those are, but for the most part, we're talking about additional pavement markings, additional signage, extending curbing, we're calling it sort of like a pork chop, because that's the shape of the curbing, but all under the guise of influencing the flow of traffic in a logical, circular fashion away from Morgan Lane to the natural tendencies for folks to circulate back in the way they came, which would be along Route 22 in front of the Stone Tavern. I apologize for the long-winded opening, it's been three months, and I'm the first, this is my first time before the Board, so I figured I'd just set the table for everything. But, I am in a unique position in the sense of having read the transcripts for all the past hearings over the past 16 months, and after reading five transcripts a few times, you kind of gain a unique perspective and flavor for an application. And I think it's fair to say, you know, on both sides of this, the applicant, you know, has done their level best and taken the Board's feedback to heart, coming back each time with meaningful revisions to their plans in an attempt to address concerns while maintaining operational safety for the site. The Board, to its credit, has been patient, they've been openly collaborative, and I think, you know, at the end of the day, I think the record's going to reflect that the result of that collaboration is an improved plan, perhaps the best plan for this site. So, I do appreciate the Board's indulgence with that long-winded opening. We can start with our first witness this evening unless the Board or Board Attorney has any housekeeping items he'd want to address at front.
I don't.
I'm good.
Terrific. Then we'll call our first witness, who's Michael Tobia, our professional planner. He's, we haven't heard from him yet in this case, and he's going to summarize both the latest changes that were submitted last month as part of his planning testimony. And then, of course, we have our engineering professional standing by, to the extent the Board or its consultants. I don't think there's any members of the public have any questions for them.
Mr. Tobia, would you raise your right hand, please, do you solemnly swear that the testimony you will give to this Board will be the truth, though nothing else is.
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
So, it's Michael Tobia, T-O-B-I-A, applicant's planning consultant. Previously qualified here many times, Mr. Chairman, if you want, I'll go through qualifications again.
As long as your license is in good standing, we can move along, we accept you as a expert in planning.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate that. Okay, so, what we're going to do, I think I have about 20 minutes of testimony. Let me first give you a refresher course on what happened at the last meeting. Basically, the site plan has now been changed to eliminate the direct driveway into the Starbucks site. The applicant will now, as you recall, be using what we're going to call the Stone Tavern driveway to the west of the site for the main access into Starbucks.
All right, Michael, I have to interrupt you, I don't think we've talked about that.
A11, Mr. Oller, I'm sorry, you're right.
And then, just for the record, would you describe what A11 is, please?
So, A11 is a one-sheet exhibit that shows several minor plan changes, sign changes, I'll get to in a moment, but it's a colorized site plan. This has also been submitted to the Board in black line drawings on May 14 of this year. You all should have gotten those a month ago. Okay, so that's A11, okay? So, anyway, now, the new access to the site will be through the existing driveway in front of Stone Tavern. Stone Tavern now is finally opened up and looking good. The applicant also added a right-turn-in-only driveway off of Morgan Lane, using the direct, the existing curb cut out on Morgan, that was cut in many, many years ago, and so now no more driveway directly into the site. As you may recall, the building was shifted back from Route 22 about 10 feet. Outdoor seating on the west side of the building was eliminated. There was some Board concern that we had too many outdoor seats, so we reduced seating from 40 down to 16, and we put a small cluster of four tables in front of the building. These changes resulted in a minor reduction in coverage of 842 square feet, so the coverage for the whole site now is 60.4%. Still a variance condition, but that variance condition relates more to the coverage of the hotel site and Stone Tavern, because the Starbucks site is holding steady at about 48% coverage, so it's well below the 60% permitted. The canopy's been removed over the outdoor storage, over the outdoor seating area. Seating capacity is now a total of 46 seats, counting inside and outside. And a slight reduction in parking down to 31 stalls from 34 initially proposed for Starbucks. You all may recall also that we were talking to you about banking some parking stalls for a long while to reduce coverage. We received input from this Board not to bank, so those spaces are now to be paved, there are no longer banked parking spaces on the site. So, those are the changes. Now, since the last meeting, after a dialogue very late at the last hearing, which was May, March 11, we've done a few things to further direct traffic away from Morgan Lane. These are in the form of signs, pavement markings, and the so-called pork chop. Recall that our drive-through lane comes around counterclockwise from west to east around the Starbucks building when visitors are leaving. After they've picked up their order, they will now see a pavement marking saying "left turn only," that means in the direction of Stone Tavern, and they will now see a sign that says "no right turn." Okay? So, all traffic coming out of the exit driveway will be forced to make the left and then head out to Stone Tavern driveway and get on 22 East. The same thing happens at the southerly end of the Starbucks parking lot. At the top of the site, there's an opportunity to exit the parking lot through the previously approved driveways in that area. At that point, drivers will encounter a pavement marking that says "right turn only," a sign that says "no left turn," meaning no turn out to Morgan Lane, and then the so-called pork chop in that area, which is just a contoured, curved island that directs you to the right. If you don't honor that island, you're going to run over it. So, we have these five design elements that have been added to the plan, they're also on the May 14 plan set that were submitted to you five weeks ago. Let's talk variances. We're in the HIC zone, as you all recall, Highway Interchange Commercial Zone. The zone does not permit drive-through restaurants. Drive-through restaurants, incidentally, are prohibited in every single zone in your town except for one. Okay? The history on that going back decades to when I was a rookie is the first generation of drive-through restaurants. We used to call them fast food restaurants back then, were a mess. Okay? Think golden arches, yellow and red facade colors, litter, loitering, car hops, remember car hops? People would actually be served food out in the parking lot. They became hangouts, they became a disfavored land use by planners. They were prohibited as a result in many towns for many decades. Okay? However, the industry reacted, we've seen even McDonald's knocking down old units and rebuilding them with much better architecture. Golden arches are gone, stores root beer is gone, and we come now to a new generation of drive-through restaurants which are embraced by the communities they serve because they're convenient. People don't have to get out of cars anymore, if they have kids in the backseat, they can stay in the car, if they're sick, they can stay in the car, if they're elderly and have mobility problems, they can stay in the car rather than get out and go in the building. So, with that said, things have changed in the drive-through restaurant field. In fact, your recent master plan says at page seven, the prohibition against drive-through restaurants should be reconsidered. Okay? It's pretty. Say it again?
Where is that?
Page seven of your master plan, 2015 master plan, Mr. Sweeney.
Thank you.
So, it's pretty good ammo. Now, that's never been implemented, okay, but it was a recommendation in the master plan that recognizes that maybe a full, broad prohibition on these uses is a little too much. When we look at the Starbucks building, we don't have any golden arches, we don't have yellow and red facade colors, we don't have neon lights, we don't have flashing signs. Okay? You heard from our architectural witness, Ben Horton, months ago, that we've defined, that we've designed a really nice-looking, classically-designed building. Okay? This site meets the particular suitability requirement for use variances for a couple basic reasons. One, it relies heavily as a use on pass-by traffic. Ms. Ollen, who's in the room tonight, says we got 3,000 to 4,000 cars per peak hour coming by this site. There's not a busier road in the town other than your freeways than Route 22. It's the perfect site for Starbucks, which, as you know, relies heavily on the morning rush hour for most of its business. Site also meets the particular suitability test because it's oversized, 67,000 square feet in size just for Unit 3, just for the so-called Starbucks site, roughly twice the size of a typical Starbucks site that we see in the area. That big lot size has allowed us to provide extra parking, now to provide a really long queuing length for the drive-through. Mr. Moschello estimated it at about 30 cars now. It's also particularly suited because we have a neighbor with access rights, so we can now not be independent with our access, but actually use the shared driveway over at Stone Tavern and get out to the site. The particular suitability test is really easy here, okay? It makes all the sense in the world for Starbucks to be located on a busy road. Note also, veteran members of the Board, I've been on this case since 1998, by the way, okay? We've had everything approved for the site. Ethan Allen, banks, office buildings, childcare centers, none of this stuff's ever been built. Virtually all of those uses I just described are permitted uses in the zone. Okay? What happened with COVID makes things even worse. The office market is kaput. You heard from Eric Mundt, our applicant, the Goddard deal was killed because people are working from home now. Okay? They don't want to go to daycare, they don't, they're saving money just by staying home. So, the office market's kaput. Branch banks are also permitted in the HC zone, and I now have clients knocking down branch banks. They're turning them into Dunkin' Donuts. That's because our electronic banking system has taken over the world. We know the childcare center, also another permitted use in the zone, cannot be built. We know a hotel won't be built on the little Starbucks site just because of size. So, the zone, when you really look at the permitted uses, doesn't have a viable option for it to be developed. And we're not supposed to have vacant one-and-a-half-acre sites on Route 22, your busiest commercial corridor in town. Okay? So, those are the reasons we think the use variance can comfortably be granted by the Board. Let's talk for a second about your bulk variances, and, Mr. Oller, we're going back to A5 from February 27, 2024, okay? When, when Rob Moschello initially testified, he did a really nice exhibit, and what he showed, again with our Starbucks site, on the lower left of the exhibit, is that when you apply the front yard setback requirement of HIC, the corner lot setback off of Morgan, you end up with no building envelope on the site. This is what we call practical hardship under the statute. This would mean you couldn't build within 200 feet of Route 22, you couldn't build within 100 feet of Morgan Lane, and it would leave you with this little rectangle in the back of the site, meaning the southwest corner of the site, that would be essentially useless from a design standpoint. We think the front yard setback variance can easily be granted under your hardship statute for that reason. Remember, historically, this zone was designed for sites with a minimum lot area of five acres. Supposed to be big, big lots, big buildings, such as the hotel. This was always the orphaned site, okay? When the hotel was approved, and when Houlihan's was approved, that was the site that was supposed to link restaurant to hotel and hotel to restaurant. Way back then, on the corner lot, what'd we have? Anybody remember?
Ice cream store.
An ice cream store in an old house. Okay? This was never supposed to be the five-acre site that would accommodate a big office building or a big hotel. So, as a consequence, the, the underlying regulations of HIC don't make sense on the Starbucks lot without variances being granted. Our next variance was improved lot coverage. We are now at 60.4%. Mr. Moschello has gotten our coverage down from the approved 60.7 with prior application. So, we have a little more green space. The good news is, once Starbucks went in, coverage went down dramatically on this site, and we're now at 48%, which is well below the threshold. We talked to you all about maybe banking some stalls to get our coverage down a little bit less, you did not want that, so we're going to go with a de minimis increase in coverage of 60.4% for the whole lot, recognizing Starbucks is much less than that. Way back when, our architect, Mr. Horton, talked about the rooftop projection. Starbucks building is only 18 feet high, it's lower than most houses in the town. He proposed a four-foot screen to go above that roof line to block rooftop mechanicals on the building. Only three feet permitted by code. We're asking you for that variance because he said we needed four feet to properly screen the mechanicals. We think that's also a de minimis variance, recognizing especially that we're a small, low-building setback quite a bit from Route 22, and the zone would let sites, would let buildings go to 45 feet in height here, we're at half that. Okay? So, that's the rooftop projection variance. Our architect also explained signs. If you recall, we have six signs on the Starbucks building. It was explained Starbucks has a preference for small signs rather than big signs. What we did was put two on the front of the building, two on the westerly side of the building, two on the easterly side of the building, none in the back facing residential properties to the south. low-building setback quite a bit from Route 22, and the zone would let sites, would let buildings go to forty-five feet in height here. We're at half that, okay? So that's the rooftop projection variance. Our architect also explained signs. If you recall, we have six signs on the Starbucks building. It was explained Starbucks has a preference for small signs rather than big signs. What we did was put two on the front of the building, two on the westerly side of the building, two on the easterly side of the building, none in the back facing residential properties to the south, in particular, Finn Durn Heights. The testimony was that all six signs combined, when added up, are less than what would be permitted for one big sign on the front of the building. We feel the benefits of small signs here is better than one big sign. And small signs, such as Starbucks logos, also helps identify the building from our easterly parking lot, from our westerly parking lot, and from the Stone Tavern site. We think that's a reasonable variance request. So I think that's all our variances here, and it is. Design waivers, we have a few. They were handled by Mr. Moschello during his testimony, since he did the design work. And so that's the use variance rationale and the bulk variance rationale. I wanted to talk to you for a couple minutes about our menu boards. Your planner, Ms. Sarmad, said you didn't call these out as variances. You didn't talk about them at all. So I want to just pull your coattails to a couple things. Like all drive-through restaurants, and menu boards are unique to drive-through restaurants, so they're subsumed in the use variance on the case, we have menu boards. When you come around the site, there's a pre-order board in the southwest corner of the site. There's a digital order board, which is where you place your order. That's basically like an electronic receipt. The order pulls up, you get to see what you ordered, you get to see the price and all that, and then there's a menu board. So there are three signs at the back of the building, unique to drive-through restaurants, that help you understand what you want. We can't run inside, grab a menu, and come back out into the car and order from the drive-through. They add up to forty-five square feet. They are directional signs. They're probably two hundred feet from Route 22 and will be virtually invisible to passengers by on Route 22. We didn't identify them as variances because we thought they were part and parcel of the drive-through use, but for those reasons, we would request relief on that if it's needed, recognizing no menu board signs, no drive-through. Got to have one to have the other. So I think that's all I have unless someone's going to recommend or remind me that I forgot something. Now, what we've been doing, oh, I'm sorry. Let me go through one more thing because Mr. Oller likes this. For the recent stated, Mr. Oller, the case promotes several goals in the municipal land use law. I'm going with A, C, G, I, and M on this. Went through the reasons already, but those are the goals that we do have to show we promote for the granting of the variances. Negative criteria, very quickly, remember, your responsibility as a board is to look at these variances and determine they're not a substantial detriment to the public good, nor are they substantial impairment to your zone plan. In each case, we think the answer is no, okay? We have a very underdeveloped site here. The floor area of Starbucks, incidentally, is only eleven percent of what could be built on the site under HIC zoning. We are overparked. We're overparked on both the big lot, small lot. That's valuable because we can't do on-street parking on Route 22. We don't want to do on-street parking on Morgan Lane. Mr. Moschello has proposed a long line of evergreen plantings behind the Starbucks, which will allow this lot, this Starbucks lot, to adequately buffer the homes, which are probably about two hundred feet to the rear, just with plant material on this site, okay? So we think homes in the back will not be negatively impacted by what we're proposing here tonight. We're going to go through some conditions with you in a minute. We also described to you a trash collection facility, which is in the southwest corner of the site. That's over two hundred and twenty feet from Finn Durn Heights. So we've got a lot of elbow room on the job for a pretty small building. Now, Mr. Oller, I know you and Ms. Stoles have gotten a list of conditions. We've been taking notes for over a year now on what the board has requested. We put them into a long list. You want to do it? John, you want, I'm doing okay so far? So here's what we have, and of course, you can add anything you want. The applicant has stipulated through engineering testimony to providing annual store maintenance We told you deliveries would take place between 6:00 PM and 5:00 AM, the really slow hours for Starbucks. So our delivery truck will be on the site when very few customers will be there. Delivery trucks will only use the Route 22 entrance. Instruction vehicles will only use the Route 22 entrance. Security lights, we propose, would be turned off at 2:00 AM. There's a review letter from the fire department. Mr. Moschello said we would and could agree with everything in that letter.
Is that the one dated February 20th?
The board package is due February 23, 2025, getting to February 20th.
2024?
Fire Department report.
2024, though.
Correct, correct.
And you're going to, both those conditions are good?
I only have one clarification. I'll throw it out there. It's my understanding that since the building is not going to be sprinkled, that the fire department connection isn't necessary in that time. If at a point in time where the building becomes sprinkler, they can do it. I, you know, I don't know if that's, if that is, is that correct or not? That's just my understanding, that the building's not sprinkled, so the fire department connection remote at Morgan Lane's not required. I don't know if anyone has a view on it.
We have to punt that. I mean, none of us are fire experts here. Bill, your thoughts?
Tom Scalera's report from February, was there, I guess there was a comment regarding sprinklers? Is that my understanding? Let me skim through it here. I see a requirement for knockbox. I see a requirement for turning radius, for a fire department connection. I don't see anything about sprinklers.
Just the two conditions.
Is it? Is there an issue regarding sprinklers? Yeah.
It was testimony. Good evening, everybody. Rob Moschello, for the record. There was testimony by the project architect a while back that the building did not need to be sprinkled based on the use group and the code. So if there's no sprinklers, an FDC connection wouldn't be necessary because you would know, there's no, the FDC connection's strictly for charging the sprinkler system inside the building.
Right.
So if the code, if anything changes when they go for building permits, and it turns out that a sprinkler system is required...
That's your risk.
We would put the FDC connection in at the curb.
So what would happen is when, if this application is approved, when Rob's office puts a compliance package together, which is them addressing all of the conditions of this approval, that issue will be vetted because Tom is going to need to do one final review, so it'll get fleshed out at that point.
So he'll get another look at this. He'll get the check.
He's going to go one more look at it. Rob will do a lead-in to say that the building, at this point, is not proposed to be sprinkled, and then that'll take care of that issue.
All right, just so the record's clear, we just refer to the township engineer, and the language is on the record.
It'll be handled. And again, through the course of the construction permit process, if sprinklers are necessary, it'll get caught at that point as well.
All right, I'm glad we put it out there. Thank you, Rob.
And we can accommodate it if necessary.
Bill, so we can go ahead without, based on what you just said then, correct?
I would recommend that. That's fine to move forward if the board is comfortable with that. I think it, there's no issues with that.
We'll leave it up to you.
Bill, what's the date of that report?
February 20th.
Continue, Ms. Chairman. Okay? Coming down the stretch here, but, okay, so after fire, we said there will be no drop-down curtains on the outdoor seating area, recommendation of the board long ago. Henry Kent Smith granted Title 39 jurisdiction of the site, okay? That's for your police to patrol. Now, at the last hearing, we talked about the idea of an off-duty police patrol for the property as it's opening up, make sure things work out great, and we would make that a condition of approval. It was for Morgan Lane, as I understand, and we would suggest a thirty-day window during peak hours for you all to patrol it, coordinate it, make suggestions on how to improve it. Our directional signs right now, which help people move around the drive-through lanes on the site, are at six-point-one square feet. That's too big. Your ordinance says they have to be three square feet. At the last meeting, we stipulated we would reduce those all in size to the required three, three square feet. Ms. Sarmad said, let's make sure the Route 22 driveway is identified on Google and Waze for the purposes of site entry, and we will do that, communicate with Google and Mr. Richard, he's over there. He said, so we have, remember, we have those Route 287 directional signs north and south of the building that say Route 287 to the, to the west. I think he said make the font a little bigger and, you know, so that people could see it. We'll do everything we can to see that. I'm sorry.
That is correct.
Okay, so we will do that.
Can I ask you to stop for just a moment? I'm right over here, and I want you to rewind to the point where the previous attorney had granted the police jurisdiction over the property. Does that apply to the entire parcel that would include Stone Tavern and the hotel or just to the Starbucks property?
Don't forget, this applicant only owns Starbucks now.
But you're claiming the integration of that property with the other two, so I'm trying to get some clarity around if it applies to one parcel, does it apply to all three?
No. I think when it came up, the idea was we would have better control over people coming down Morgan Lane and trying to make a left into the driveway. We're trying to discourage commercial use of Morgan Lane. We're granting Title 39 blanket over Starbucks, and I let our attorneys figure out if it could be done over the whole site, or, Mr. Oller, if it was even granted five years ago, we just don't recall.
I don't know if it was granted when those other sites were approved, and I don't think this applicant has the authority to say that they would agree to grant it on property that they no longer own or control.
That I understand. But again, because we're talking about essentially a three-unit land condominium, for want of a better description, and you want to, when you talk about coverage, for example, you integrate all three properties together. You talk about other aspects of the design, you integrate all three properties together. I'm not trying to beat this up. I just want to know whether it applies only to Starbucks or if it applies to the whole property.
Recall, if you would, that it was explained there are cross-access easements over the entire property, okay? Meaning Starbucks can drive to Stone Tavern, back to the hotel, and so on, and I would imagine Title 39 would let the police do all that also.
Maybe if we just find out, that would be a better answer than the one we're making up.
What I can clarify is this, the condominium has three, three-unit condominium, it has three distinct legal owners, the applicant this evening, a related entity which owns the Stone Tavern, formerly the Houlihan's Lot, and a completely unrelated third party, which is the hotel, because a lot was sold during COVID, I think around 2021, 22. So we, as the applicant, we don't have any problem with the first two that we control, which is the Stone Tavern Lot, the Houlihan's Lot, and the Starbucks Lot. We have zero control over the hotel lot, other than what's in the master deed for the condominium itself. And as Mr. Toby has said, there's cross-easements, and there's shared parking, and things of that nature. We don't have the legal ability to burden their lot or extend Title 39 to their lot without their consent.
So then, for the sake of this discussion, Title 39 applies only to the Starbucks site?
I think for this purpose, yes.
Thank you.
So to wrap up, the final condition we proposed, which is self-evident, is that what you see here on Exhibit A11, the signs, pork chop, and pavement markings will be integrated into a full plan revision, site plan revision, so that the exhibit is memorialized in the plans. That's all I had for conditions, and that's all I have for my testimony.
Yeah, let's open it up to board questions. Mrs. Min.
Someone is traveling on 22 from the west direction. To enter, they have to go through that Stone Tavern entrance and then go into Starbucks. So how would they know that they are supposed to take that?
I couldn't hear that. You're too quiet. I don't know anyone else who's so outspoken as you. So...
Oh, okay, so now you can hear me, right? I'm sorry, sorry.
You're not soft-spoken.
Someone who's traveling on Route 22, and they, they have to enter from that Stone Tavern entrance, or is it entrance closer to the building? So how do they know that they are supposed to take that entrance?
You know, I don't think I mentioned it. Another condition, thank you for that, would be that we proposed at the last hearing to a sign on Stone Tavern, just a long, narrow sign that said Starbucks.
It will be, there would be a sign over there that says Starbucks.
It would be at the Stone Tavern driveway, and it would say Starbucks. And then, once you came through this, this throat of the driveway, there would be a small directional sign right there saying Starbucks left, and that's what would get you to make a left in front of the Stone Tavern building and proceed to Starbucks.
Suppose someone misses that entrance, then they have to go to Morgan Lane and then enter.
Correct.
Okay, so once you enter through that side, are you allowed to go make a left turn at that point to park in one of those parking spots or do only right, because your drawing shows only, only right turn, no left turn up there, once you enter from Morgan Lane into the property?
Once, so let's say you miss the Stone Tavern driveway, okay? You're still traveling on 22 eastbound, and you are going to be alerted to Starbucks by a freestanding sign and the building itself, and then your next opportunity would be to make a right on Morgan, on the commercial side of Morgan. Don't forget, we have a Jiffy Lube on the other side of us, okay? There's a driveway. That would be a right turn in at that point, and there's also a directional sign there once you come through the driveway that would say make a right. You'd come around the front of the building.
And then go around.
Around.
Okay, it's locked down, okay.
Any other board questions?
If someone is going to have the coffee and want to leave, what options do they have going towards the top-top of the drawing? You can't make left, and so you have to go around and then come back.
We have directional signs on the site, okay? A lot of them that explain which way to go to drive-through, which way to go to the building. We think we got it right, okay? We would expect, the way this is designed, that when people come in Morgan Lane, they're not, they're not going to miss that driveway. They will have seen the building by then. There will be no reason to go down to the other driveway whatsoever.
So the first entrance from Morgan Lane, you can also exit from that one?
No.
No, no exit.
Entrance only. Entrance only.
All right, other board questions?
Yeah, I just had a quick question. I believe I was the one at the first or second meeting quite a while ago who questioned why there's so much outdoor seating. So you, in the back, which would be the back of the building, you reduced it and took some of that out, and you're going to have four small tables in the front by going towards 22, but you're not increasing that area, though, are you? That's already, that was there originally?
Yes.
Okay. So you're actually reducing the back, reducing the number of tables, and just adding some on existing what was going to be there?
You may recall, we had 40 seats, 40 outside seats on the west side of the property, and that was all eliminated as part of the redesign.
Okay, so you're.
Actually, I had more outdoor seats than we had indoor seats.
You're shrinking that, and then just keeping the same size in the front and adding some tables?
Correct.
Okay.
It's correct.
Thank you.
One else?
Yeah.
So I have some, a note from the original meeting about the landscaping, and at some time, we talked about the landscaping not being completed until the hotel was finished. I don't know if that was a stipulation. Can we get a clarification on that? Is that true or not?
Remember, we did have that discussion. We don't own the hotel site anymore. We, meaning the applicant. Okay, can't go back there and plant trees or do anything else. So the query from the board was, how do we landscape Starbucks as if the hotel's never going to be built? We expect it will be built. And that's where Mr. Moschello did this nice line of evergreen plantings along the southerly side of the Starbucks site. We control that plant material. What he's showing there right now are 14 really big evergreens that are really going to grow. So we hope hotel gets built, but if it doesn't, the Starbucks site is really well-planted, especially along that southerly property line.
So everything we see here, and the town sees here, will be completed?
Correct.
Great, thank you.
Thank you on this application. And one of the reports I came across is dated December 20th of 2023. It was prepared by Scarlett Doyle, former board planner. And on it, it raises a number of issues. I just want to bring up one and see what you think about it. It's about the Morgan Lane exit, and it says, and I'm just going to read this, this is the report, Scarlett's report, "Use of the exit from Morgan Lane for Starbucks restaurant should be a matter of testimony. The HIC ordinance specifically prohibits access to Morgan Lane if the board determines that the road primarily serves residential zones." Where are we on that? I don't remember the board doing much of anything in terms of what Morgan Lane is used for, but apparently the ordinance is quite specific, the HIC ordinance.
It was, because the Morgan Lane debate, protecting the homes on Morgan Lane, went back to the 1998 app. We've been talking about it for over 20 years. The answer now is this site proposes no egress whatsoever to Morgan Lane. Okay, so the driveway coming in off of Morgan, the one I just described, is inbound only. And then, everything we've done with the signage previously described is about taking traffic out to the west, out toward Stone Tavern, and then directing it to the Stone Tavern driveway further west.
Isn't it possible for somebody at Starbucks to use that second egress point on Morgan Lane, the one that's further south, right? Can't they use that?
The answer is yes.
Well, then how does, how does that, you know, explain to me how you can do that if the HIC ordinance specifically prohibits access to Morgan Lane?
When I, when I read that, and when I listened to all, I've been at every hearing, okay, for 27 years. The whole angle was about preventing people from coming down Morgan to get to this site, meaning commercial traffic through a residential zone. The way this is done now, we have, our driveway is so close to Starbucks, the one I'm circling now, the new one. It's almost incomprehensible why folks would miss that driveway and go down further into the southerly driveway. Now, remember, we have two things going on with Morgan Lane. Once you get to the end of our site, southerly property line, that's when Morgan Lane turns residential. After that, it's the nice condos and a bunch of single-family homes all the way down to Union Avenue. Before this line, it's commercial, notably the so-called hotel sites, Stone Tavern, Starbucks. On the other side of the street, you have Jiffy Lube. So we have a really clear line where this, where this street starts and stops as to residential use. We think we've done everything here we can to limit commercial traffic on the residential section of Morgan.
I get it. I understand exactly what you're saying. I'm just hung up on the fact that we have an ordinance in place that specifically prohibits access to Morgan Lane. It would seem as though what you're proposing is a blatant violation of that ordinance. I mean, you can qualify it any which way you want, but what you're coming down to is there will be traffic, potentially there will be traffic exiting Starbucks onto Morgan Lane and direct the second, the second driveway. If people get lost somewhere inside there and find themselves at that second driveway, what are they going to do? Keep driving around, or going to use that exit onto Morgan Lane?
There was always going to be a renegade or two who does it. When I, and I'm familiar with the provision you're talking about, I thought it said access to Morgan Lane, meaning egress to Morgan Lane.
It says access, that's all I know.
Mr. Chairman, can I just chime in one second?
Sure.
Let me just, let me just read the provision of the ordinance, just so it's clear, because Scarlett paraphrased a little bit. I'll read it directly. In fact, Board Member Sweeney, you may have as well, but it says, "All uses in the HIC zoning district must have direct access to a state highway," which this does by way of the main access by the Stone Tavern. It then says, "Direct access to a public street servicing residential zones is prohibited." So I think the argument is that the direct access is, in fact, off of Route 22, and the access point off of Morgan is secondary, and that's why they prohibited right turns out of Morgan to get you just back to Route 22. So the Morgan access point is only a left turn out to get back to 22. It does not provide direct access to the residential portions of Morgan. I think that's the interpretation of the ordinance, that's the way it's written. Obviously, it's up for the board to, you know, to take a look at that, but that's my read of it, at least.
Okay, well, thank you. That's, that helps. Mr. Tobia, the other thing that, as I, as I went through a lot of paperwork to try to bring myself up to speed on where we've been and where we're heading on this thing, there's been a number of changes, and I've lost track of all of them. I don't pretend to remember all of them, but there was certainly a plan that included direct access off of Route 22. A lot of concern about traffic building up on 22 as a result of that. So you made changes to try to accommodate that. There were other concerns about how many cars would be able to queue, waiting to put in their order. You made changes to accommodate that. There have been a number, I don't know, three, four dramatic changes made to the plan, and as I, as I sat thinking about this, it seemed to me as though this really says something about particular suitability. I know you addressed particular suitability, and I understand the reasons you gave for why this proposal meets the particular suitability test, but I guess the issue I had in my head is, if this site was so particularly suitable for this use, wouldn't it have been easy to come up with a design that accommodated it? But instead, we've gone around and back and forth and over and under to get to where we are today, which to me might say, this site was not particularly suitable at all for this application. And that's why they've been tripping over themselves every other year, month, to try to explain why it works. Help me, help me. Is, this is a site plan review process, okay? You guys get to review what we draw, and many site plans, Mr. Sweeney, are negotiated. You give a little, we give a little, we come back, and many of them, as you know, you've been on the board a long time, it takes a while to get it right. Recall also, this is the smallest building ever proposed for this entire site, one quarter the size of what we approved with Goddard, just as one example. The complication has always been backup, potentially out onto Route 22, which no one ever wanted. And, you know, listen, the other day, I added up, I've been to about 3,000 zoning board meetings in my career, okay? Zoning board, planning board, you get the idea. This is pretty common, okay? I routinely have cases that go on a couple years. We routinely have cases where plans are revised multiple times, and we've tried to work with you every step of the way. I don't believe we've ever said, "Your suggestion is impossible." We've said, "We'll work on it. We're coming back in two months." I don't think that speaks to particular suitability at all. I think Starbucks is looking at the chops to get this site. It's so perfectly situated for their business.
But you were also here for the meetings where, you know, I drove to nearly every Starbucks in central northern New Jersey. You proposed a light system, you know, a green and red light system. It didn't work in Madison, you know, so a lot of the things you proposed, to Mr. Sweeney's point, the suitability is in question, and to the point where the technology you offered up wasn't even viable at your other location, at a brand-new store in Madison, New Jersey. So I think those are things that should be on the record, and hopefully you've addressed and addressed Mr. Sweeney's question. I mean, you feel this is a suitable site?
Love this site.
Okay.
Remember, our fir, I don't get too emotional about my cases, Mr. Chairman, but our first witness, Liz Ann Kyle from Starbucks, from way back, said, "This is an enormous site for Starbucks." And size matters here, okay, because once we put the kibosh on the gates and that lighting system and all, we realized we could take a queue out 30 cars to Stone Tavern. No one ever expects it will get anywhere near that level, because people are going to get bored or impatient, go down the street to the next whatever, Starbucks, Dunkin', whatever. But that size speaks to, speaks to particular suitability as well.
One thing I do want to add to your stipulation list, we need some way that if there is an overflow in the queue that does back up onto Morgan, or God forbid, 22 somehow, we need to record that, we need to let the police know, we need to let, you know, the operations of this establishment know, and we need to address it. Because the whole reasoning, you touched on this in your testimony, why is this not an approved use? Well, the Somerville Dunkin' Donuts is why this is not an approved use. We don't ever want to drive through New Jersey that's going to, A, be in a residential neighborhood, but B, propose a potential safety conflict. And that's why, you know, we've been here for 16 months working on this. So I don't know how you want to structure it, if you want to work it out with Bill, you can even work it out after this, this meeting, but there needs to be a way that we can record that the queue's overflowed and address it, and mitigate that risk somehow.
I'm glad you're saying that. We did agree to that a long while ago.
Okay.
Looked through the cracks. But you're talking about the idea of an annual report on how the drive-through lane works.
Well, you know, in the first two weeks, if, you know, you have every kid in Bridgewater wanting to get a mocha latte, and this backs up onto Morgan or backs up onto 22, we got to come back, we got to fix this.
Agreed, and we will, we'll add it to the list, okay?
And to ensure that, we will have the police presence during that peak hour for that first month to sort of train folks as they see the new use, train them as to the traffic patterns, get them to understand the flow of traffic, and certainly, you know, if there are 35 vehicles in that queue, which is unprecedented, but it should happen, the officer will be there to prevent it.
No, I, I still can't reconcile the traffic testimony where we have service grades from A to F. I don't know what an F is, I don't know what an A is. I would assume an A is good and an F is bad. But nonetheless, you know, for me to use my mathematical brain to say, you know, is this 10% safer, is it 20% less safe at this different points? What's the incremental difference between the grades? I've been on the zoning board 15 years now, and I still don't know. And I certainly know from the testimony at the last meeting, these are things that, you know, I think the board is still going to struggle with. So I don't know if you have anything to add to that in your planning testimony, but, I mean, it comes down to, can we give the town assurances, and the residents assurances, this is a safe property?
So I don't do traffic testimony?
I'm not asking you to talk about it, but it's just something back to suitability.
What I got out of my notes from Ms. Dolan's testimony was level of service never got down to F. And she's here tonight, I think she's still here, right? She's here. I thought she said C in the AMD and the PM.
Right, and the range was A to F. I didn't mean to insinuate that it was an F in any way, shape, or form, but the range was A to F.
Yeah, I didn't hear it that way, but she's here, if you want to talk to her. It's a funny thing. The more traffic that goes by the site, the more suitable, as Starbucks is, if you can follow that.
Sure, absolutely, from a dollar perspective, but from a safety perspective, how do you reconcile that?
And then I would wonder, think about this, can't we say that about seemingly every land use along Route 22 with the traffic volumes we have? You know, it's just, it is just life on 22. So anyway, that's my, that's my traffic testimony for the night, Mr. Chairman.
Right, but approved uses go to that safety aspect, and why we don't have drive-throughs in Bridgewater, and the one that is on 22 is a Somerville establishment, and it's a safety risk. It's embarrassing that they let that establishment continue to have their queue spill into 22.
Yeah, there, listen, there are a few Starbucks, a few Dunkins, all of them, that were retrofitted into sites, Madison included. You see, okay, this is a one, an acre and a half site, you've seen it, you know, carpenter's dream, right? There's no water on it, it's just big and flat. And this is a little bit different when you build new, rather than try and retrofit and squeeze things in.
All right, thank you. All right, last chance, board questions? Board professionals, have at it. Reese, you got to look ready.
Any, any questions, but just want to give you, Mr. Chairman, a little summary. The applicant did comply with all the recommendations in terms of managing the flow of traffic on site, putting signage, changing the geometry to ensure that traffic will be guided in the right direction to go towards Route 22 and not Morgan Lane. And I reviewed the analysis, the level of service, and I find them to be done appropriately. Now, to your question, Mr. Chairman, you know, from A to F, I'm going to give you a very simple answer. It's all a matter of delay. We do the calculations, and if there is a delay of up to 10 seconds per vehicle on average, it's an A. If it's up to 15 seconds, it's a B. If it's up to 25 seconds, it's a C, and so on. And if you reach 50 seconds of delay, that is classified as an F. So an F doesn't mean failure from the sense of a bridge failing. An F means that each vehicle, on average, has to wait 50 seconds or more at that stop sign. So when in a study tells you that it's a level of service C, that means it's somewhere between 30 and 20 and 30 seconds, or 20 and 35 seconds. So that's what it means. I hope I gave you a good answer to the question.
I want to clap. You're the first traffic engineer to do that. Thank you.
Other than that, and I heard your question, I can't read your name, Ms. Amin?
Yes.
Amin, okay. That's a very, very good question, by the way. The only response I would have in addition to what Mr. Tobia said is that, generally speaking, people that go to Starbucks become repeat customers, unlike some other convenience stores. So they learn. So if they miss the driveway the first time, they learn and they will do it right the second time. Because if they go on Morgan Lane, they have to go all around the site, and they realize it's not the most practical way. they realize it's not the most practical way, so they do it right the second time. So, I'm not very concerned about that point, even though they will be putting signs, which I think should work with 80 or 90% of the drivers. So, that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much for clearing that up.
Mr. Chairman, I don't have specific questions of Mr. Tobia from a planning perspective. I do have a question for Mr. Michelelo. I don't know if now's the appropriate time to have him come up, and let me ask him one quickie.
Is it now or never?
Um, so, actually, it was Board Member Fresco that just asked the question about landscaping, and even, even Mr. Kulak alluded to it. Through the course of the hearings, we've had a number of questions about how this project, this, this particular condo lot gets constructed in relation to the hotel, recognizing that they're not gonna get built at the same time. And there's a lot of improvements on the property that overlap in some respects. As it relates to this application, Rob, there's some improvements that stretch beyond the limits of the condo, striping, signage, that are part and parcel to this particular development. Can you, or would you agree to a condition to revise your plan? I'm almost thinking from a phasing perspective. I think it needs to be very clear what gets built. If this application is approved, what gets built with Starbucks versus what gets built with the hotel, if and when that gets constructed in the future?
Yeah, Mr. Bur, I mean, I'm, I'm looking at my nice rendering here, that is a, a printout of what Mr. Tobia presented to the board. And the way we rendered it and hatched it, we highlighted the items on there that we're anticipating would get constructed in terms of the signage and striping and everything. That kind of follows that dashed line, you see. But to your point, yes, I agree. We should probably provide an updated construction phasing plan that differentiates the work that must be built if the Starbucks goes forward before the hotel, so that when the Starbucks is completed, the signage, the striping, and everything is in place for the, for the opening of the Starbucks. I also know there's a sanitary line that crosses through the hotel lot that has to go in. So, that's, again, there's, there's some other improvements there that are tied back to this. So, again, we'll make sure we, we make that clear on the, the site plans, if that's a condition of the approval. There's no problem with complying with that.
Okay, great. And then, just, just for the board's benefit, I had, in my notes, a few other potential conditions of approval beyond what was discussed earlier. One of them we just discussed, which is the queue management of the drive-through. There was an agreement early on, the first or second meeting, that a plan was actually gonna be presented as a condition of approval, almost like an O and M manual on how issues, if there are issues, are gonna get dealt with.
Who should they send that to?
Um, that's gonna need to be submitted as part of the compliance package. Again, assuming an approval, as part of the site plan compliance, that will need to be provided. I think Catherine and I would take a look at that on the board's behalf, but I think that would be the appropriate time.
Yes, we're okay with that, yes.
There's also, in addition to providing the annual certification for stormwater, you have to provide the O and M manual before that as a condition. I, you know, I just wanted to be very clear in, in the conditions.
We'll do that as well.
And then we have outside agency, which I'm sure Rich is gonna, any outside agency approval, including, I think, going back to DOT, there was a discussion at the last hearing, I think, about going back to DOT. I could be mistaken, but I thought that was, that was in there.
Yes, there was going back to DOT for the removal of the driveway, and then also we need to, um, if the board acts favorably upon this, we'll need to submit an updated TWA application to the state. So, once we go through the compliance process, we'd ask that the town would provide the endorsements on that, so we can file for the TWA permit as, as we go through the compliance process.
Very good. That's all I had. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thanks, Bill.
Just, just a few things. Um, I think Mr. Tobia provided all the requisite proofs for the variance relief that's being sought. I appreciate the additional testimony related to the menu boards. Um, I, I think that those should be included, and he did provide the testimony, as a variance for those, as a variance for menu boards where no menu boards are permitted. Obviously, if the zoning ordinance doesn't contemplate drive-throughs, largely, except for one zone, menu boards aren't, are, it's silent on menu boards. But I think that, as we've, if anyone's been to a drive-through in the last 10 years, the, the menu boards have changed dramatically, the size of them have, in some places, are enormous. And so, I'd rather control it with the variance relief for the total square footage amongst those three menu boards, and, in the case that they ever need to come back for any expansion of those, so they don't get out of hand. Because they are lit internally, and they do have-
Enough board to be turned off at closing? All right. We should just throw that on the stipulation list while we're at it.
This gets longer.
All right, thank you.
Yes.
Um, other than that, I have, I have another testimony, another question, sorry.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, members of the public that have que-, oh, sir.
Can I just give you 30 more seconds, if you don't mind?
Of course.
Here's the intent and purpose of the HIC zone, okay? First of all, that stands for Highway, Interchange, Commercial, okay? Um, it says, "The purpose of the zone is to provide for the regional, commercial, and transient needs and uses appropriate, appropriately situated, or adjacent to the intersection of major commercial highways." Highway means more traffic, interchange implies more traffic, and so does C, which stands for commercial. What I'm getting at is if you all were in a residential zone, the R-50 Zone or something like that, we should be bellyaching about more traffic. This zone is on Route 22, right next to Route 287. Traffic is supposed to happen here, okay? That's all I got.
Thank you very much. Uh, members of the public that would like to ask questions on the planning and the updated testimony from Mr. Michelelo, now's the time to approach. You can ask questions into the microphone. All right, seen none. Counselor, if you wanna wrap up?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, members of the board again. You know, we've heard a lot, obviously, over the last 16 months, and even this evening. Do believe that this project represents a great opportunity to finally develop this out parcel that's remained fallow for so long, 20-plus years at a minimum. You've heard testimony that the site's been previously approved for numerous uses. That just never happened, including the furniture showroom, the office building, the bank, the Goddard School, all of which, as Mr. Tobia testified, are pretty much permitted uses in the zone. Mr. Tobia also testified this evening that the physical constraints of the property, given its size, the changing market conditions, or appetites for those types of permitted uses, really prevent the site from reasonably being adapted to a permitted use in this particular zone. You've also heard testimony throughout the application that, although a use variance is required, the site, we do believe, is, you know, appropriate for this use, and it is particularly suited to the location along this major regional highway for the reasons that Mr. Tobia set forth. It's compatible with its surroundings, particularly with the restrictions that are gonna be in the record to the extent there will be an approval granted by this board, particularly as it relates even further as to the use, with the prevention of use of Morgan Lane. It's complementary to the uses that are gonna be, or will soon be constructed on, on that site, talking about the Stone Tavern, and of course, the hotel. It's not gonna generate meaningful traffic along 22. It's a convenience use, it relies on pass-by traffic that's already there. As we noted from the outset of tonight's hearing, this is truly a collaborative effort. And although I have not been involved in this since the beginning, I've been doing this enough, enough myself to know that this is probably one of the more collaborative efforts I've seen in quite a long time. And I think it stands to, and it speaks to the patience and the commitment of both sides to try to find the best plan that fits for this particular site. Yes, there's back and forth, and it may be divergent at times, but I think at the end, I think the record does show that you ultimately get to the right place, and address the, the concerns of both the board, members of the community, the consultants, and come to the best possible plan for this site. There'll always be traffic, as Mr. Tobia said, associated with this site. Whether it's a Starbucks, whether it's a Goddard School, whether it's any other permitted use, you're gonna have the traffic conditions associated with the site that we've been talking about for so long, particularly relating to Morgan Lane and the use of Route 22. The record shows that, you know, the applicant's done everything they can to strongly influence that traffic, and really prevent the use of Morgan Lane for anything other than a secondary entrance coming in and no one going out. So, I think that's really all I have to wrap this up. It's been a long, hot night. I do, before I close, though, I do wanna acknowledge Henry Kent Smith. Um, you know, I'm just coming here at the very end, whatever that outcome might be. He's done a tremendous job. He's been an elder statesman, been in this profession for far longer than I've been practicing. And he's done a wonderful job. I hope he's enjoying his retirement, but I do wanna give acknowledgement and recognition to his efforts on this application. On behalf of our client, I do believe we satisfied the verdict of proof for the relief sought in this application, and I'm pleased to submit this application for approval by this board.
All right, thank you very much. We're, once again, gonna open up to members of the public that would like to speak for or against this application. Now's the time to come up and give us your thoughts. All right, seen none. Uh, we're gonna start deliberations, we're gonna open it up. Mr. Waddell, what are your thoughts here on Starbucks case?
I have a few comments. Um, for the, probably 15 years or so I've been on the board, this is probably the most means we've ever had on any case. Uh, I know we go back a long time. Um, I've lived in the area for 30-something years. Uh, we all know that 22 is a difficult road, and at least where you're looking to put Starbucks is a more open area. You know, that land's been empty for years. It's, uh, you know, you can't miss it. Um, so going back to when we started all this, back a year plus ago, we've asked for changes, and you basically have given us everything we've asked for. Uh, it's been very accommodating, because I don't think we'd be here tonight to be voting, uh, this far along if you'd incurred those changes. And I've, to me, you've reached a criteria that I would have wanted to make this as safe as possible, and to put a business there. So, in my opinion, I'm for the application at this point.
Thank you. Chris, thoughts?
I think my big concern was the, the Dunkin' example of going back onto 22. That was, that a concern's been eliminated. I don't think we've asked for anything that hasn't been granted, at least to a good faith extent. Um, I would be in support of this application at this point.
John?
When I, when I recall all of the meetings we've had and all the testimony, the board has been insistent on the safety of this site, the safety that, the risks that it might present to the township. And we've worked very closely with the applicant to create as safe a plan as we possibly can, at the same time preserving the residential integrity of Morgan Lane by limiting access onto Morgan Lane, and still providing access to the Starbucks. Creating a room for the queue that would, we hope, prevent it at all from overflowing in any direction, and just maintaining the queue within the site itself. And I think both the applicant and the board have worked together to accomplish that. So, I too would be in support of this application.
So, yeah, I do believe you met, um, all of the criteria for the property, and you've
definitely, definitely made it as safe as it possibly can be. I do think it's confusing. I'm not going to lie, it's kinda like a maze, and I'm, my one concern is, um, people getting in and out of here. And it's not just safely, it's just getting in and out at this point, I think. And that's, it's the only concern I have on this. Otherwise, I think you've been very accommodating and done everything you possibly could in this site to make it work as good as possible. So, generally, thinking I'm in favor of this at the moment.
Thank you. Mrs. Amin, your thoughts, please?
Um, this application number goes back to 2023, and we have heard the applicant in so many different times, and they made so many different changes. Now, the latest one looks like it's a very good, uh, design in terms of traffic and what, everything else. From my perspective, it looks like a good location for something like a Starbucks. And I'm in favor of approving it.
Thank you, Mrs. Amin. Mr. Sweeney?
Yeah, I've, excuse me, I've got a couple of hangups on, on the application. One is the, um, drive-through aspect of the proposal. This is, a drive-through is expressly prohibited in the ordinance. In fact, it's one of the very few uses that are expressly prohibited in the ordinance, anywhere in Bridgewater. I don't think Bridgewater needs a drive-through restaurant. And I think that the difficulty the applicant has had coming up with a plan that they tell us is gonna work, is symptomatic of the fact that it's just, you know, this, this site doesn't belong here. It's, it's got too much traffic going in and out. It's, I'm sitting here looking at, I'm, I'm confused. I don't know how the hell you get in and out of this site. I really don't. And if you're gonna tell me that there's not gonna be any traffic leaking onto Morgan Lane, you're crazy. Of course, there's gonna be traffic that flows onto Morgan Lane. Um, I, no, I'm, I'm opposed to the application, and we'll vote against it.
Thank you. Fresco?
Um, you know, the first meeting, I said, uh, you know, how much I love this town, and blah, blah, blah. I always say that. But, you know, I said, if, if we're gonna build it, Bridgewater should have the best. That's what I said. If you're gonna build this thing, make sure Bridgewater has the best. And I, I, I echo a little bit of, of what, um, you know, what you're saying. But I think, looking at it, it's, it's, it's daunting, you know? It is scary looking, and it, and I am a little bit afraid. But I also think that, um, a lot of work's gone into it, a lot of planning's gone into it. I like the landscaping of it. Um, and I think when it all comes together, I really do think we're gonna not only have the best Starbucks drive-through, because it really is a drive-through. This isn't really a Starbucks restaurant at this point. I mean, look at it, it really is. I think you will have the best, and I think we'll have the safest, which is not what I said originally. So, I think I can add to that. Um, and I think you guys have done an outstanding job, I really do. Um, and, you know, all the things that everybody's said about all the meetings. I think a lot of credit goes to Henry. Uh, I've never felt like we've had an attorney in front of us, and I haven't been on the board 15 years. I don't know what it is now, it's probably five or, five or so. But, uh, I thought that he was super understanding, and did a good job keeping us calm, and saying, okay, I'll take care of it, and to your team. And, and ultimately, last thing is that, as a businessman, and you own this land, you have a right to develop it. And, um, and I think you're gonna be very successful here, and I wish you the best of luck. I do support it.
Thanks, Andy. Fresio down there.
All right, I think the board asked a lot of questions about Morgan Lane. We were very concerned about the traffic. We went through a lot of iterations. Uh, I think the applicant acted in good faith here, and did listen to the board seriously, and made changes to address our questions, especially the latest changes. Um, I do believe the traffic patterns appear to be a little bit more clear than they were before. There's less choice in terms of going left or right, with more of a right turn and a left turn only. Um, so I, I do feel that we have mitigated the safety risks to an acceptable level. There's still gonna be risks. I mean, with everything, there's always a risk, but I think the application, the applicant has mitigated safety to, um, an acceptable level. Last comment here is regarding the outdoor seating. I might be in the minority, uh, on this board, but, you know, I, I actually did like the outdoor seating. Try to bring life to the outside, activate the environment, you know, get people to slow down, get out of their cars, you know, have a coffee with a muffin, you know, before, before their way to work. So, I actually think that is, you know, a detriment to this application. I actually would've wanted to see that. But understanding with the traffic and safety really trumps all, um, you know, I, I'm okay with moving forward with this application, as is. That's all I had to say.
Thank you very much. Uh, I'm gonna read this into the record, only because it does sound like it is not a unanimous affirmative vote. And, let me just read it, and I'll be quick. Over the past year, through six hearings and extensive testimony, the application by Bridgewater Realty, too, LLC, to construct a Starbucks location along the U.S. Highway 22 has undergone significant evolution. I wish to commend Mr. Kent Smith and his team for their substantial good faith efforts to address the board's concerns, particularly with our top priority, safety. The applicant has presented various witnesses, with some demonstrating greater reliability and credibility than others, and their willingness to adapt has been greatly appreciated. However, we cannot ignore the stark reality of Route 22. From Branchburg to its terminus at Newark, Route 9, this highway remains an unmitigated disaster. While the Bridgewater corridor boasts an aesthetically pleasing landscape, thanks in no small part to this board, its inherent safety challenges persist on both east and westbound sections. These issues are not theoretical, they are daily concern for our residents. At our last meeting on March 11th, 2025, Elizabeth Dolan, a state licensed traffic engineer from Dolan &amp; Dean Consulting Engineers in Somerville, provided critical testimony. She confirmed that this project, along with its traffic impact studies, has been reviewed and approved by both state DOT and Somerset County officials. Her analysis, distilled into levels of service graded from A to F, she concluded an acceptable overall level of service existed. service existed. Notably, she addressed the merge of traffic from Morgan Lane across Route 22 to 287 southbound, stating unequivocally, there will be no detrimental impact on the adjoining road system. Furthermore, she asserted, I do not see a drive-through queue ever reaching Morgan Lane or Route 22. This testimony, given under oath, carries significant weight. Personally, as much as I may want to vote against this application due to persistent safety hazards along Route 22, I must consider the broader implications for Bridgewater. For this board to defend a potentially very costly and unwinnable loss from this applicant, who has diligently mitigated every single concern raised over the last six meetings, is not in our residents' best interests. This applicant's commitment, supported by Ms. Dolan's expert testimony, demonstrates a reasonable effort to ensure both safety for customers and the Morgan Lane community. I want to acknowledge the intent behind prohibiting the drive-through use in this zone, which is to prevent unsafe conditions like those observed at the Somerville Dunkin' Donuts, where the drive-through queues regularly overflow into the highway. I believe the applicant has taken every feasible step to mitigate this risk. While safety remains our top priority, the applicant's compliance with state and county reviews, coupled with the potential legal and financial burden to Bridgewater residents with denial, guides my vote to be a yes, with the strict conditions of Mr. Tobia. So that's it. I will, Rich, if you want to take us through any last-minute housekeeping, we'll open it up. Do a vote.
There, do you want me to run down the conditions again?
Why don't we do that? There's some potential-
I think we have enough time.
Yeah.
There's a lot of conditions on this application. Okay, in no particular order. The existing driveway to Route 22, to and from Route 22, will be removed from the plan and will be closed. The primary access to the site was shifted to the Stone Tavern driveway along Route 22. The applicant accordingly will add a Starbucks panel to the sign at that location in order to encourage access at that location. The Morgan Drive driveway is shown to be used as a secondary entrance to Starbucks. The canopy on the west side of the building will be removed. The applicant shall maintain the stormwater management system and provide annual stormwater management reports. I guess, Bill, you want those, all right? They would go to you?
Yes.
Storm reports?
Yes.
Deliveries will take place between 6:00 PM and 5:00 AM. Delivery trucks will only use Route 22. Construction vehicles shall only use the Route 22 entrance, and the entrance at Morgan Lane shall be closed during construction. With respect to interior security lights, the interior security lights will be, I'm sorry, only use the interior security lights when the store is closed. And I think we need a little discussion on security lighting, because I was not clear. I guess we're having no security lights in the parking lot? Is that right? Is that the proposal? One second. While you're, while you're looking at that, I'll just keep going, because I had other lighting. So parking lot lights, we turned off within one hour after closing and not turned on until 30 minutes prior to opening. The applicant will comply with the fire department review letter. Oh, there was an emergency light at the rear service door. That'll be eliminated, and instead it'll be mounted in the overhead canopy. There'll be no drop-down curtain on the outdoor seating area. Title 39 jurisdiction will be granted by the applicant for the Starbucks property. The applicant will provide for the use of off-duty police patrols for Morgan Lane for up to 30 days as needed following store opening to enforce traffic patterns. Reduce directional signs, directional signs have already been reduced to three square feet in compliance with the ordinance, and that's on the plan already. No? Okay, so it will be.
Has to be revised.
Okay, it will be. The applicant will submit requests to Google and Waze and attempt to ensure that navigational instructions direct Starbucks visitors to the Stone Tavern driveway along Route 22. The applicant will increase the font size on Route 22 directional signs to five inches. Okay, we talked about this, but I wasn't sure if this was going to be a condition. You were adding a no right turn sign at the Morgan Lane exit, and we talked about it being illuminated. So just for discussion for the board, if that were an illuminated sign or just a regular no right turn sign at Morgan Lane?
I don't remember that.
Yeah?
I don't remember there being a discussion about it being illuminated.
There was a couple of comments about it being illuminated, and I didn't think it was a condition. I thought it was just a no right turn sign.
I agree with that.
The zoning chart needs to be updated to include the setback to the rear canopy. In the event of any vehicles stacking onto Route 22, the applicant shall promptly provide notice of such to the township police department, and will also provide an annual report to the township engineer. You'll, the applicant will provide a construction phasing plan with, right, with respect to construction of the entire site. You'll provide a business operational's manual. Is that what you're looking for, Bill, with compliance, as well as an O and M manual for stormwater?
Stormwater, O and M manual, and then the, the traffic queuing, site operational, drive-through management, however we want to call it. Drive-through management is probably the best.
And the menu boards will be turned off when the business closes. And then Catherine, I missed the part you talked about the number of signs. Were you attaching the number of signs to the entire site or just the Starbucks site?
The number of sign limitation.
The Starbucks site, I believe.
Starbucks, okay.
And that's all I had.
All right, thank you, Rich. All right, based on the conditions and the stipulations, open to motions to approve or deny?
I'm moved for approval.
All right, we have, do we have a second to approve? Mr. Fresco. All right, we can get a roll call vote, please.
Mr. Widdelly?
Yes.
Mr. Sweeney?
No.
Mrs. Amin? Yes. Mr. Fresco?
Yes.
Mr. Gajewski?
Yes.
Mr. Kulak?
Yes.
And Chairman Foose?
Yes. All right, congratulations. Good luck with construction.
Thank you for all your patience throughout all this, this entire thing.
Enjoy your summer. Thanks, guys.
Thank you very much.
All right, before we go, our next meeting is scheduled July 8, 7:00 PM. We're going to hear Bridgewater self-storage. If there's no other business, everyone have a great Fourth of July. Stay cool. We'll see you July 8. Motion to adjourn?
To adjourn.
Mr. Gajewski, a second. Thank you. Good night, everyone.